We surveyed everything, we looked at past records, we know which village facilities are there. There's sewer, there's water main. We'll still be able to maintain those facilities. And like you mentioned, we are gonna install that extra fire hydrant. So to answer your direct question, we can still have access to repair those?
I understand that, but looking at the pictures, it's a lot of concrete. And if all that is concreted over, who's going to be responsible for accessing that?
The village, we still need to access it.
The cost, who's going to be responsible for the cost of busting up all the concrete?
It's the village's facility, so we would have to...
So can we make some limits to that?
No.
In case that happens?
No, we don't have to excavate the concrete. I mean, the sewer is...
True.
Right, I mean, just like any other sewer, something happen to the sewer, we have to do it. Then you're responsible.
All of our tenants of sewer are...
Excuse me.
Sorry, you have one.
So, the way it is now is that the alleys have gravel on it, where they're very accessible to any sewer project. So what I'm asking is if it's concreted over to accommodate these trucks, who's gonna be responsible for busting up that concrete to access those sewer lines?
The village has the right to destroy their concrete to fix the sewer line, and then it would be on them to repair their concrete.
We'd have to repair it, yeah, that's...
Okay, so it's on record that if we have to access it and get through the concrete, that we're not responsible for fixing it back?
I would say... I don't know what the ordinance reads, but that's my interpretation of it.
Thank you.
Okay, another question from the board. I worked on the preparation of this ordinance. And there are a lot of people that... Good evening, I'm the village attorney, Stanley.
Didn't help.
That'll be us working.
I don't know if it's working or not, I'll try to speak up. A lot of individuals contributed and worked on this project. It's not something that happened overnight by one person. I wanna take and indicate certain individuals, I'd like to single them out, if they stand up, I want them recognized. First, Dwayne Liddell. Dwayne, Public Works Commission. David Killen, our village engineers. Chief Andrew Horber. Kail City Plumbing, they're not here, but they were there too. And David Rock, from the village. All these people contributed in one way or another. They were present and inspections and reviews onsite, walking through the areas, reviewing different locations, the placement of the fire hydrant consideration, whether it will be consistent with national standards. Engineering, the work on the observing rights to enable access to sewers, making sure they wouldn't be inaccessible. Almost these individuals, I actually draw the legal document. These individuals contributed to help me do that. And I'd like to recognize them today for all of their hard work and effort. It wasn't just one meeting, it was seven. And some of those meetings were walking around in cold and snow, looking for various sewerage and hydrants. So, a round of applause goes to those people.
And with all due respect, Mr. Horber, as trustee on that committee of ordinance and resolution and planning, I would have liked to have been included in those meetings? Thank you.
Any other comments on...
Also, the money that we will acquire from the sale of the right-of-way, that will be drawn up in ordinance also as far as how that money will be spent? Okay, but separate ordinance will be based as far as how that money will be spent? So it'll just be decided upon how the money will be spent?
It will go into the corporate stock, it will go into the corporate stock. And like I said earlier, we put a sign, the software, I mean, for the water bill, with everybody's weapon, okay? And I don't know when we're gonna get EPA loan. Dave, could you also speak to that? Are we gonna start the project, are we gonna buy the software? That'll be about $10,000. We gotta buy some master leader for the businesses. Are we gonna buy some of the leaders in, I mean, their staff? On each side of the ground, we got the excavator, so we gotta do that. And a couple of other things that we need to do, so we're not just that going forward.
And I'm so glad that we're moving forward on this. But those plans will be in writing, and the board will be able to see that, right?
Any plans to say what?
Everything you just said.
No, I mean, no, it's gonna happen.
I understand that, but like I asked engineer Dave, I asked him for a copy of the plans for the water meter project and the cost breakdown. And he said yes, he'll get that to me the next day, I never received it. I've been asking him for it too much.
Yeah, they don't have that. EPA, I mean, whatever we've given them is not... They haven't approved it, so if we gave it, then it probably wouldn't be official anyway. You know what I'm saying?
I understand that, sir, but when you ask for a loan, they ask you for a business plan. They're not gonna just give you the loan based on nothing, something out of the air.
But when the time comes, then that will be...
Okay, so all I'm asking is, everything that you're saying that's gonna be done with this money, $6,000 for this, this money for the software, this money, can we also please be part of that and see those plans?
Well, I mean, you can see the invoice once we buy them.
So we're not gonna have any decision on what's purchased or what's bought or how the money is spent?
No, first of all, let me make a comment, let me explain something. The administration, the village, ran by the mayor, the clerk's office, and the department. But that's administrative function, it's a state function. Just like the president of the United States. These people may not like the decision that he made when he was president, right? But he cannot have every member of Congress coming telling him what to do, that's not working. That's the same here, you know, so, and of course, needs to be known when, you know.
I think you and I appreciate that, but like our last audit from Lauderbach and Amen, it was suggested that any money spent after, over a certain amount, that it has board approval. And that hasn't, that hasn't been done yet, so that's all asking, will we be included in plans?
Well, first of all, this is not taxpayer money.
I understand that.
Not taxpayer money, okay? So, I mean, taxpayer money, there's a different definition, different category. It's a higher house for this person, right? This is not taxpayer money.
So, so the answer is no, we will not be involved, we will not be included, we will not be involved?
I mean, it will be spent, I'm saying it will be spent for our community, and the community will benefit from it. And it's like what you wanna see it anyway. Okay, all right, thank you. So, see you.
Make a motion to pass ordinance numbers 2019-0-001, promoting specating portions of dedicated right-of-way streets and alleys within Mr. Ball's business property located in the village of Burnham.
Have the motion of support by trustee Garcia to approve this resolution 2019-0-1 in ordinance. I'm sorry, we need a second.
Next.
Trustee Richardson, let's take a moment.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Motion passed, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you. I want to say, like, a lot of stuff, we'll, to your point, we should have had...
Can I just mention one more thing? We have a job fair tomorrow.
This is important.
Job fair tomorrow at the community center from 1912. If you know anyone, if you're looking for work or you know anyone, please come and see us. They're gonna be interviewing onsite. Starting rate is $15 an hour, and it's for one of the suppliers to report. We're gonna be hiring quite a few people there, excellent benefits also. Yeah, they're hiring over 200 people, so if you don't even experience it, make sure you're eager to work. So that's tomorrow at the community center, 9 to 12.
Mr. Gadsden, I'll see you down there in the morning.
So we have more flyers, move us out, make sure that you guys get them, I can stop by to pick you up.
Okay, but thank you, trustee Garcia.
Finance, trustee Cap?
Good evening. Discussion of consideration of taking action on authorizing the payment of this month's bills when funds become available? Question?
Question to come in?
I'd like to make a motion...
Yes, sir, do we have any account of what bills are owed for this month? Or any money that is coming for this month?
You do, but not with me. So I'd like to make a motion...
Every single meeting, I ask the same thing, can we get an account so the people can know what's being paid and what do we have and...
The bills are already there, but you left it.
Then why aren't they, why aren't they available to the board?
They are available.
Okay, so, once again, discussion of consideration of taking action to approve or not approve on the authorizing of payments of this month's bill is exactly the same type of thing that we've been doing for the past, I don't know how long, that's gotten us into the condition that we're in now.
That's not true, that's a legal requirement. By law, by state law, we have to say that. We have to have a motion to approve the payment of bills every month.
I understand that.
Once every month.
So we're just, so we're just saying, yes, we're gonna pay bills and have no idea what bills are...
We can't pay them unless we say we're authorized to pay them.
Also, I'd like to say, Mr. Robinson will come out and love the plumbing job, whether the board approve it or not, we still owe him money, we gotta pay him.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of last month's bill.
The motion of support by trustee Cap, we need a second. Motion to pay bills for that month.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Absence.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you, proceed, trustee Cap.
Louterbach and Amen LLP, the village of Burnham's current auditing company, shall provide a copy to the president and the board of trustees of the village of Burnham, the audit report, and a management letter for the fiscal year ending 2018.
I'd like to, Sean Higgy from London, can I meet you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sean Higgy, I'm an audit manager with Louterbach and Amen. Oh, sure. There, he's had a podium last year. I'm here to present the audit results of the April 30th, 2018 fiscal year for the village of Burnham. Before I start, I'd just like to make sure that the village, the trustees have what I'm looking at, and that's the annual financial report from April 30th, 2018. Also, I have a copy of the management letter. You probably maybe have a bound copy of it, or you have a copy of it, or no. And I'll just, it'll be a document that I'll go through. And that management letter has our recommendations based on our audit. So the first thing I'd like to start out is, in the audit report, I'm not gonna go through every page in detail, but I'll point to a number of different pages within the report, just some things that we like to highlight based on our audit. And so the first thing that I'd like to have you turn to is the independent auditors' report, and that's on page one and two. It's on the Louterbach and Amen letterhead. I won't read this verbatim, but from the board's perspective, based on the audit of our financial, the financial statements of the village, you received an unmodified opinion, and that's a clean opinion. And so, everything that we were presented for our audit and that we tested on a sample basis, that's presented in the financial statements, we found to be materially correct. Behind that is the management discussion and analysis. I'm not gonna go through that in detail, but also, this is a place for you to, a board, we always suggest to read through because it provides comparative information from year to year, so it's a good way to look from one year to the next year on how the village did. Well, what I would like to point out is the current year results for your governmental funds. So behind the management discussion and analysis is the basic financial statements. And so you would wanna look on the basic financial statements, page, it's page 11, I believe it is? Oh, I'm sorry, page nine. On page nine, what is presented here is your revenues and expenditures for your governmental funds. So this covers your general fund, it covers the motor fuel tax fund, and in the past, as we'll get through, you used to have a debt service fund, but it was closed during the current year. What you'll notice is a key financial indicator, the total column, three rows up from the bottom, the change in fund balance, it's a decrease of $193,000. So what that really represents is that your revenues that you brought in to the village exceeded your expenditures by $193,000. If we look to the general fund, the decrease was only about $24,000. So the majority of that decrease was in the motor fuel tax fund, so expenditures for things like roads. And that's, that's why that decreased. If we turn to page 12, as you know, the village also operates a water and sewer fund. And so, for the fiscal year 2018, same thing, if you had the water and sewer fund together on page 12, the totals are an increase of $188,049. If we look at the water fund, you had an increase of $52,925. And what that represents is, for the fiscal year, your revenues exceeded your expenditures. One other thing to note, though, on the water fund specifically, is there's what we call a deficit balance. So in other words, that's an accumulation. For over years, the water fund has been having more expenses than revenues that have been brought in. And, you know, you can see, and that's certainly why you guys have been asking the rates to increase the water rates.
And also, I'd like to say, that's why we cannot lower the rate. We cannot create a debt relief fund and all this kind of stuff that's coming out. We cannot do that, but we cannot. And like we said before, if there comes a time that we can revisit that, if we can make any adjustment to it going in the future, we will do it, but right now, we cannot.
If you turn to page 15 of the financial statements, the village is trustee of the police pension fund. And also, this is a part of our audit. And what you'll see there is that three rows up from the bottom, the change in fiduciary net position is really, these are assets that have been set aside to pay future benefits for the policeman. And you have an increase of $11,404. And those assets accumulated, a little over 1.8 million, those have been set aside for future benefit payments for police when they retire. In the financial statements, there's a notes of financial statements. Again, I'm not gonna go through those in detail, I'd just like to mention that that has a little bit more detailed information about your long-term assets, your capital assets. Has some information about pension information, as well as some other requirements about cash investments that are required by government accounting standards. That's really all I had on the financial statements, if anyone has any questions.
Would the board have a question?
When was this report available?
Well, actually, it's, let me go back to our audit report page, but available in the sense that we wait until it's approved at the board meeting. We recommend that until it's approved tonight, that you don't release it to the public.
Not release it to the public, but when was this available to the board?
Oh, to the board? Well, our audit opinion is in December of 2018. And then usually, with the holidays, we'll probably have to look those to see when we actually send it to the boards.
It's being presented to the board today. I understand that, so in the future, if we can get the report from the board ahead of time so that we can have time to read it prior to him explaining it to us, then that would be more helpful. But again, it's being presented to the board. I understand that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And another thing I'd like to say to the public, I mean, before we proceed, again, we want you to know exactly what is going on here at the village. Like, we don't have anything to hide, there's no untranspassable, like, we cannot... I mean, I wish we could freeze the proper tag, we can't do that. But I like to freeze my tag, so I don't wanna pay no extra tax. We can't do it, so, I mean, if you receive stuff in the mail, people tell me they're gonna lower your taxes, no, they can't do it, they don't have the authority to do that. Right, they gonna, no, they gonna reduce your water bill, they can't do that. Right, they gonna create a water fund, it's not to be. So, I mean, just be mindful, I gotta be mindful, like I said earlier, we're running within good hands, we've got my word on it, right? Right, and we will do the best we can to continue to keep running, moving forward.
Was it in good hands when all that money was stolen?
You know what?
Stay up and sit over, there's a lot of... On page 24 of the audit. We had two figures on 12, page 12. We're still in... This is kinda hard when I read it beforehand to keep...
And I'd like to say another thing, now that I'm retired from steel mill, I mean, I worked 42 years in the steel mill. And I worked 42 years in the steel mill. I mean, now that I'm retired, I mean, I'm here, right, I can get a little bit more involved in the process, and I can speak certain things. And certain things did happen in the past, you know, I apologize for that, but, you know, but I was not aware of that, and because I've never stolen things in the village in my life, and I never would. The things that I did take it without my grandmother's place 50 years ago, you know, when I was a kid, you know, but I do not steal, and I would not steal. You know, I'm trying to get to heaven, okay? So, right, I'm on this program, and if it target this, right, you can rest assured that we're gonna make sure that we manage things the right way and get them to run.
That's all we want, that's all we want. Tonight, on page 24, just to touch base on page 24.
Oh, the deficit, I had it. One thing Bruce asked me to point out there, again, in the water fund, there is a deficit fund balance. And basically, that's just a, as of 12/31, it's a little over 1.2 million. And again, that just represents, over the years, it's accumulated. And, you know, it went down from last year, as we see, it went from 1.4 to 1.2. And so, you know, certainly, that's something, as you raise up the rates, you know, you keep having a positive, like, fund balance.
And we try to collect the money that the people owe in the water bill, we try to collect it, and, you know, we try to, we try to work with the people, and if they work with the clerk's office, clerk's office will work with them. And we try not to terminate the service unless we just really, really have to. You know, sometimes, people just don't cooperate with us, and that's why we have no, we have no other choice but to interrupt the service, so...
Thank you, Sean. Thank you.
See you, trustee Cap.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you.
No, because of that.
So I'll make a motion to approve the audit report from Louterbach and Amen LLP. Copy to the president and the board of trustees, the audit report, the management letter for fiscal year ending 2018.
And the motion of support by trustee Cap to approve the audit report? Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson, let's take a moment.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Some utilities, trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On February 28th, we had a presentation from night four, explaining different things we could do to help us save money on our water, our heating. And they were also offering free weather satisfaction. We had a nice turnout, and I think it's a lot of good information that could be used by all of us. So I'm gonna invite them to come out again in a couple of months. But we are, we're always trying to bring suggestions and different organizations that can help us as residents, because we all live here. And any money that can be saved on your utilities, we're always trying to provide that for the residents. I will come, I will announce a date in the future that we'll have them come back. And we also have comm ed come out and seat us, so, just for future reference, we're always trying to help our residents.
I also would like to make a comment. It was so important, we learned so many facts. Did you know, how many of you are, when your relatives, even yourself, go in and take a shower? You go in there and stay for 30 or 40 minutes, do you know how much water you're using and how much that costs per gallon? They explained a lot of facts like that. It was very interesting, very informative. So when they come out again, we're suggesting that you come out, learn facts, and ask questions.
All right, thank you, trustee Richardson, trustee Greer for the information. Is that all you have, trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Park and Recreation, trustee Bonner?
Good evening.
Good evening.
There are tickets on sale now for an annual showdown at the park tournament. It's a basketball tournament against your state of Illinois representatives and state of Illinois senators. And then the next one will be against the city, the park employees against the city employees tournament. And those tickets are $5 each, to be held on March 23rd. Yes. And this weekend, Saturday, is the Princess and Superhero Luncheon for ages 2 to 10, where they can dress in their Halloween costumes, their favorite costumes. And the price has been reduced to $5. So that's this Saturday at the Sandridge Community Center for 2 to 10 years old, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., the price is reduced to $5. And we're still, they're still looking for volunteers for the community garden. If you'd like to plant your own vegetables, please call Tom at the park district. The telephone number is available here, or you can email him. And spring camp, they're signing up now for spring camp for young achievers, ages kindergarten through eighth grade, it's $110, and a $40 non-refundable deposit. And that's for the week of April 18th to April 26th. And that's it for my report, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bonner. And what day did you say the rest of the tournament is gonna play?
That's gonna be March 23rd.
At the Sandridge also, right?
Yes, and if anyone would like to buy tickets, we have someone here where you can purchase your tickets.
So, okay, thank you. The latest presentation petition, communication, memorial. Could we have a, the moments of silence, and also, if we're, depending on what investigation is, whether you can and cannot say anything about what happened on Brainerd Avenue the other day? Right now, I'm, that I'm at, so I'm... All right, thank you.
We were called out to Brainerd Avenue on Thursday morning, about 7:20 some in the morning, regarding a deceased body inside the road. The primary investigation was that it was a female that was walking. She was walking down Brainerd Avenue, she was struck by a vehicle. We're still working on the investigation, it's basically, as much as I can tell you, it's ongoing still, working hard on it, and hopefully, we're able to bring closure to it. Okay, thank you. 1 year old, 15...
All right, thank you, so, let's try to be as safe as we can, and not have a problem from point A to point B. So, the other thing is there, an unfinished business that I forgot to mention, that also, that once we finish the acquisition, the process of selling the furniture store to the development, and we're gonna, and we're gonna pay the $600,000 to watch the grant from the private company. So again, but there'll be no cost to the property owners of Burnham, and they get that, and we'll take care of that. Someone came to the meeting a few months ago, they asked the question, why do we buy a new covered perch truck? For that white truck, the superintendent drives a covered white truck around, costs $43,000, where the gambling money from, from the machines throughout the village paid for that. But you didn't spend any money for that, okay? You know, so we are managing the village, it's, I mean, it's going okay, like I said, so, just, just work with them, and... Bad thing on a new business. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. The motion to approve by trustee Claybrook for adjournment, need a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, by trustee Cap, protest.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Motion passed, meet at the adjourn, we have a press conference, so please stick around, listen.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.